I'll call a meeting to order for Thursday, October 13, 2016, for the planning commission. Mr. Hanky, roll call, please.
Commissioner Chappell here. Commissioner French here. Commissioner Ogden here. Chairman Powell, you have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. I will wait for public comments when we address issues. We all need you to go to the podium, state your name, blah, blah, blah. But discussion of possible action on application 2016-20113868 regarding alley closure for property...
Approve the minutes for it.
What about the minutes?
Oh, excuse me. Item three, approve the minutes of August 11, 2016.
I move that approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Chappell?
Yes.
Ogden?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
The minutes of the August 11 meeting are approved as written.
Thank you. Item four, discussion of possible action on application 2016-20113868 regarding alley closure for property located at 407 West Harrison. Mr. Hanky, do you have a staff report?
Yeah, this is a request by Jennifer Bozarth and Carla Vales. It's a request to close the north-south alley easement in block 61 in the Guthrie Townsite Edition. It's actually an unused, unpaved, grassy area between structures, between Harrison and Vilas Avenue. You have some documents marked Exhibit A and Exhibit A1. As I already mentioned, the subject property is unpaved and not used by pedestrian or vehicular traffic. The surrounding zoning is mostly the central business district. Utilities were noticed, served notice of this application, and we also used typical notification protocol in the Guthrie News Leader on October 1 with 12, and also 12 letters mailed out to property owners within 300 feet of this subject property. If this alley is closed, it's just closed as a city right-of-way to the public, and that's all it means. If the area residents want to take it into private ownership, of course, they have to go and file a legal instrument at the county courthouse to vacate the alley. But tonight, all we're doing is yes or no on the closing it to the public.
But all easements, all easements that are there for public utilities remain anyway?
Yeah. The city, if they, if the citizens in that area may file a motion to vacate the alley, the city will be served notice of that date, and then the city attorney will investigate any public utilities, infrastructure that's there, and respond.
Right, but it takes a district court to do that.
Takes district court to vacate it. Right, we're just simply closing it.
If utilities were necessary to be removed, who would that be paid for if that becomes a private?
Well, I think we would maintain an easement if we had to get in there and replace some of the infrastructure.
Thank you.
Any, like, OGN, Oklahoma National Gas, they have right-of-ways, anyway.
Yeah. There's a couple of maps in here. It's hard to, I got, I gave you everybody an aerial. I don't know if it went out in the package or not, but it's kind of easier to kind of just see it, because it's kind of blends in over there with everything.
I would open it up for a public discussion. If anyone would like to talk, we'd like you to come to the podium. In regards to, Mr. Griffin, if you'd come to the podium, please state your name for the television.
For the television, okay. I'm Casey Griffin. I own three-quarters of the east half of that block, and I'm the silly sucker that's been mowing that alley since 1978. You call it unused, I call it used. I use it almost every day. I mean, I may be the only one. I know the wrecker company that rents from me down there uses it, too. I see no point to these proceedings at all. It ain't hurting nothing the way it is, so I'm totally against it.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Ms. Bozarth, would you like to talk?
I'm Jennifer Bozarth. I own the property to the east and to the west of the alley on the first portion, mainly the first quarter on the, from Harrison up. And this is, I understand, the first step in vacating it, which hopefully, possibly, we would like to proceed doing someday. And if I could approach here, I've got just some plans to give you.
Ms. Bozarth, can I ask you one question? I know you own the two-story brick building where Mr. Griffin's property is. Do you own, is there a building that sits there behind that?
Behind the building I own? Yes, Mr. Griffin's is behind mine to the south, but I own lots one, two, and three to the east of my building.
But what I'm asking is, the gray-colored area, if you want to look at this map, I don't, is this a building that Mr. Griffin had back there years ago, or something that was sold out or something, right here? Is that, is that just vacant land, or is that a building? Was that a warehouse-type deal, or?
This is my building.
Right.
No, that's Mr. Griffin's building right there.
Okay. So, Mr. Griffin owns from behind your building, other than that line?
Here, sorry. So, I own back to here, lots four, five, six, and then this is his building right here.
Okay.
Okay, so I was looking at the aerial. I wanted to make sure, because the way it's marked off, I wouldn't sure.
This is the alley, and then I own all these lots.
So, picture here again, your building, and then you own this portion in between. Here's his building. I see.
Yeah, this is my building.
Same survey. Okay, okay.
And then I own these lots. And I'm just asking, so this closure right here.
Jennifer, show me out there what you're talking about.
This is...
This is my building, and these are my lots.
Okay.
So, I was just wanting to vacate this portion here, but they're saying it's easier to do it all at once. But I wouldn't close him off in any way, because he has access here and access around here.
Correct, that's an alley behind your building.
This is an alley.
Right.
So, there's plenty of access on the west side.
Where are you asking to close up to there? Well, of course, I guess we've got to do it all, but technically, how far did you want to go?
Technically, we've got to do it all, but I just want to do it on the properties I own. So, there's...
Which would be to technically there? Is that correct?
Yeah. So, there's access in and out of this building through here.
Through the front.
And then lots over here, a lot, a whole lot over there, outside.
But not behind his building, any further?
Yes, and actually, in my deed, it says that we share an undivided one-half interest in lot six, so there's a, there's like an alley, like a driveway. I, in my deed, it says I give him access to a driveway on lot six.
Okay, through here? So, he has here, here, and, so technically, you're only looking to, if you could do this, you're only looking to...
Right, behind your building. If we would end it right behind your building.
Uh-huh.
Rather than the whole alley.
Yeah, here's ultimately some of my plans. This would be our option one eventually, if we get this, and we can't eventually.
Could you hold up that camera? That might help you look at that.
I don't know if you want to look at this. The reason being is, this will one day be a residence soon, so we'd like to possibly put a garage there or a garage here if we can't build across the alley. And then this red is eventually a fence we'd like to put in, because we have all the traffic from the bar over here driving all over our lots.
So, yeah, technically, you only needed that portion, right?
You only need, actually, behind his building here.
It's got it upside down.
Correct?
I had it upside down.
No, on the east side, this is...
Oh, the east side would be...
I was pointing at the right block, though.
Yeah, you look at it like this, actually. So, we just see this piece right here.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay.
And technically, all of this does border Mr. Griffin's land.
So, we could basically exile this out, unless Mr. Griffin wanted to do that. You just needed that first portion.
And then there's lots of access over here as well.
Okay, okay, I'm with you. I'm with you. The license.
Would you mind sharing that down here, so you can see her here?
This is the building here.
Let's close this portion right here.
As you can see, this is...
I'm just saying, excuse me, this is, is this lot six that they have joint access through?
Yes, this is a building Mr. Griffin owns, too, with his warehouse.
Right, but there's this opening behind him, right there.
Undivided access to a driveway.
But I don't know that's actually, actually alleyway.
Well, she said she's got a share with him somewhere.
My building's only this short portion here, I own both of these properties.
Okay.
Just to shut that down there. There's still access south, and there's still lots of access west.
So, where are you wanting to do it, then? Just here?
Just right here, yeah.
And not this?
Yeah, that, I don't care anything about that.
Mr. Griffin, could I ask you to step up here a minute and kind of show you?
So, you're talking basically right there?
And you can determine, okay.
I have an easement right through the middle of her...
Lot six, correct.
All the way through the alley?
Her building, 23 feet.
And you're saying right here, Mr. Griffin, is that right, right in there? Here's her building, here's yours. You have an easement through this lot, is that right?
Yes, I have an easement right straight, that right there.
Okay, you have 23 feet through there already.
All along here?
No, I was supposed to have, oh, no, I've got pictures, I ain't got nothing. They've blocked me completely out. They're piling rocks up and all that kind of stuff.
There's a septic system there we don't want driven over.
I paid for a third of it, I can know exactly where it is.
Okay, I'm a little confused here. Is this the portion behind that you have this easement?
This is an undivided...
What does this have to do with an alley?
Locked, I didn't have anything to do with it.
Right.
Have anything to do with closing an alley?
This alley right here, behind, beside the building?
The 15, the 15 feet.
To the west of it, or to the east of it?
My deed only says that we share, uh, undivided one-half a lot six, that's what it says.
Commissioners, may I say something?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis, correct me if I'm wrong, please. Tonight, we're just considering closing the space to the public. Easements and other rights will be discussed and determined at the vacation portion of it.
Correct, it has to go to district court to be done.
Yeah, so...
What does closing the space do, though? Keeps anyone from...
It just closes it to the public right now?
So, what I want to ask, Mr. Griffin, you say you have 23 feet through here, which you do not want vacated.
Well, I can't even get into my door. There's my warehouse door. See those rocks, all that junk? They put posts up on there.
But we own that.
There's an easement, lady.
Not in my deed, there's not.
Well, you better check your camera further.
But that doesn't have anything to do with just closing this alley for now, so we can proceed with the vacation we can...
Well, it's the first step of death.
But there's a ton of space on the west side here, and this whole south alley.
Um, Ms. Bozarth, I think, actually, and I'm not a lawyer or anything, but I think it takes a suit and district court to do it. I don't know that...
The very first step, I was told, is I have to have it closed to the public and approved before I can proceed the vacation.
Yeah, they, the county, the court won't vacate an alley unless the city's giving it up.
Correct, correct.
I'm a little confused on, Mr. Griffin, you're saying that you have, you have some access...
He has 23 feet easement through here.
Well, the alley's only 15 feet wide. I understand it's 23 feet. The alley's 15 feet wide. Where does your 23 feet, the alley runs like this, is 15 feet wide?
There's, there's, there's 23 feet from that building over...
Are you saying that's here?
This is Miss Drunk, the alley does not go through my...
This is the back of your three lots?
Okay, here's a, here's a better picture of it, perhaps. Here's a better picture. The alley coming down, and there's your building, I went up there and drew. And this is the area that you share, apparently it's lot six, I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
And you share easement in that area.
Yeah.
And see, the alley's only 15 foot wide.
So, what are you asking to vacate? Just this portion right here?
How does this, can you still get in behind your building here?
I can't, I can't get a trailer in there, I can't back in there.
He's over here.
Do you, do you actually come through the alley on occasion?
How, how far is that?
Okay, that's right. And, of course, it goes like this.
What's the distance that you want to close?
I'm trying to, trying to see.
Your lot's 25 foot wide. 37 feet. How many lots is it? 37 feet.
37 feet, so it's a building, it's...
Well, that's an, that's an aerial there. Yours, here's this picture, of course, and she was talking about going to there 15 by the depth of her building. This is a portion that you guys share, apparently, actually.
You come down Harrison from...
Can you not come in from down here? Of course, I know that's a great, not a great road.
No, he owns all this. He owns everything through here, clear to that, but he does not want that closed right there.
We back semis in there.
Right down through there.
Go to that building from Harrison.
And then they started doing this deal, and they...
Actually, that alley does not go past his building here.
This have come up for another meeting, this...
And then they decided that nobody's going to do that.
Come up at a different meeting than tonight.
So, the alley, his building isn't in the alley that...
Well, no, you can, we can put the motion up. Whatever description it is, that's what the...
They're just...
We're just recommending...
Of course, there's a door in the back of your building.
Well, I want to have somebody show the public what we're talking about here, so...
I know we were trying to figure it out, I'm very sorry, but...
That's looking from over here?
Like, like this?
No, it's off of Harrison Street.
We're looking off of Harrison.
Before you get to the railroad tracks, there's a two-story building right here.
And is this down the ways?
And they're talking about closing the alley to this point of Mr. Griffin's building.
If I were coming...
But, okay, do you need this to show?
I was coming down the alley. Where am I looking at this at?
Okay.
I'm coming, walking down the alley, come across from them.
The alley's over here.
Okay.
Now, they got this post in there that they're calling the alley, but I don't think it is, but...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The applicant just stated that she is willing to change her request to include the alleyway just that runs parallel to her property, which would be to the end of lots four and five.
To the east of it?
Yes.
And end it right here? It'd be right here, correct, on this map?
You're talking about, like, 60 feet or something like that?
If you look at the survey.
Look at the survey.
It'd be just this, that little piece of the alley, is it, so we're asking for.
Where's lots?
Which piece? If I turn it right, the way it's laying?
Lots that join, that butt up to lot four and five and lot three.
Roughly 77 feet.
Correct.
Of depth? You're talking 15 foot wide by 77 depth? What are your thoughts on that, Mr. Griffin? You're saying...
I don't see what it changes, I mean, I don't understand what you're saying.
You're saying just to the back of your building?
If we're going to live here, we have to have a yard, and we have to come out a door that's fenced in, we have a dog, so we have to have this eventually fenced in. You can't have a driveway through here. But we are way more than willing to let you drive wherever you want back here. I mean, that's all I'm saying.
Well, all I'm saying is, then it makes only half of my building that I can drop, that I can get a trailer back into, to my warehouse.
How so? This is...
The driveway's now been pushed clear over here to the side.
But you have all of this and all of this to get a trailer in and out of there.
Okay.
I know it's probably easier to go straight back like that.
Sure.
But to me, it's not easy to bring, you know, I mean, I own this and this, and if I'm going to live here, I want a yard, and I don't want to have to walk across the driveway or someone driving across my property.
This is not, this is not a residential area, anyone. I guess that's probably the next step, then, then they'll hang me somewhere on the back over there.
Now, I really, I really need you all to get to the podium, but I think we understand what you're talking about.
I'm not trying to be unreasonable, I just want to...
Mr. Hanky, do we, is there public utilities through that alley, anyway? There probably is. At some point, OGN, or somebody's through there, anyway, so the easements are still there.
Right.
And there's another, there's another one buried right around the corner from on the backside of my building.
Okay.
So, you, you're not intending to build over that, over the, or where you...
Eventually, if we get the rights to vacate it, we would, but we would honor any, we couldn't build over any utilities, as we understand.
But if it's vacated and Mr. Griffin has an easement through there, he has access to it at any time.
I, I understand that, but that would have to be something that would have to be looked into.
That would be something that had to be handled by the attorney and district court, probably, but...
This, where I'm showing, I don't know how, it's been, that, her piece of property's been bought and sold five, six times. Originally, two of us bought that property together, Branson, Kenneth Branson and me.
Yes, sir.
We split it. And this easement I have, Jeff Herzl wrote up, and it's on both of those abstracts, that this easement's there. Now, whether it's been skipped over since then, because it's been a bunch of times.
When was it filed?
Well, that's, that's only a matter, Ms. Bozarth, we need to, we need to move on. I think we understand what, what you all are doing, and, you know, I'd entertain a motion. I'd entertain a motion that we either deny or approve it.
Well, it would certainly be nice if, if there's an opportunity for the two of you to work it out before, before we make a, make a motion.
First, I knew of any of this was when I got the little letter, and they haven't talked to me, said, boo, nothing. In fact, they've gone over the edge trying to make it harder on me, so...
Mr. Griffin, I don't want to be rude, but they need you, I mean, if you want to step up to the podium, but...
Give a call for motion?
I would entertain a motion either to approve...
I'll move that we recommend disapproval of this until such time as it's resubmitted and clearly identified, so everybody knows what we're talking about.
Motion's been made, do I hear a second?
I think that's a good, good stance. I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Can we have a vote, please, Mr. Hanky?
Vote to deny the application, a motion by French, seconded by Ogden. Vote, Commissioner Chappell, vote to deny. Yes or no?
Yes.
Ogden?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
It's to be written that the application has been denied.
Item five is discussion of possible action on application 2016-2011380 regarding alley closure at 1901 East Oklahoma Avenue. We have a staff report, please.
This application, Commissioners, is actually a three-parter. It's to close three public right-of-way areas by Lamar K. Wade. The first is an unused, unpaved street, portion of the street of Hazel Street, located between blocks one and two in the Oak Park Edition. The second is an unpaved, unused street, East Harrison, located on the south boundary of the same area, block two, in the Oak Park Edition. And the third is an unused, unpaid portion of the east-west alley in the same block and same addition. If you take a look at those things, you probably can't discern one from the others, they're just all grassy areas. Mr. Frank Davis is here to answer any specific questions that you might have.
I don't think they've ever been used for years, anyway, but, Mr. Davis, would you like to address this, please?
Yes, I represent the Wades, and they have made this application. We previously closed part of the alley in block one and part of the Harrison Street that joins block one, and this just kind of extends it on to the west a little bit. These areas have never been used, to my knowledge, certainly not in the last 50, 75 years by anybody. And, of course, we plan on going on to district court for a permanent vacation of them. I think there are some easements in there. Those will be preserved in the district court action.
Mr. Davis, thank you. I would entertain a motion that we...
I move we approve this application and recommend approval to the council.
My second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Ogden?
Yes.
Chappell?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Wade.
Here, it's right here.
It is, Mr. Davis. Is that in them, trust me?
Take this with you. Next time, Mr. Wade...
Take this with you and bronze it, yeah.
Next time, Mr. Wade, it'd be nice, I'd have a seeing-eye dog, so I couldn't get lost out there, because I do.
Thank you all very much for being here. Item seven, or item six, discussion of possible action, amending design guidelines for accessory buildings.
Yes, sir, Mr. Commissioner. I have received Cody Mosley asked me to distribute this tonight to you all. It's just a letter from a concerned citizen about the design guidelines, and he wanted to have some input to your thought process, if that's ever looked at, to make any changes to. I'd like to just pass it down to you, if it's okay.
Thank you. So, we will address this at a later meeting, after we review this?
Yes.
Mr. Hanky?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. I think we have been through two workshops on this, and I don't... We'll discuss this at a later meeting after we read it?
Right.
Item seven is request for future items of discussion. Commissioner French?
I think we need a workshop and review several of the ordinances. We are not New York City, we're not Edmond, Oklahoma, or Oklahoma City. We are a rural community with folks that live differently than they do in Edmond, and I think some of these things that are required are totally out of line, and I would like to see those discussed at a workshop.
Very good, Mr. French, thank you. Mr. Chappell?
Um, no, I've, I've got nothing.
How can we arrive at a date for a workshop there, Mr. Hanky?
Well, I think if you all just get a date and call the, call Cody, he'll set something up.
Yeah, we need to make sure it's a date that, that we can all be there, and that's convenient with everybody.
Do we need to be specific? I like Mr. French's proposal, and do we need to be specific on any item?
It'd probably be best to have a good date to make sure that Mr. Mosley has the date open, and/or myself.
Correct. Yeah, we need to coordinate everything together, if we can all be there and we're not out of town or something.
I agree, I agree.
Item seven? No, item eight, sorry. Staff comment?
Staff has no comments, sir.
Item nine, commissioner, commission comments, Mr. French?
I have nothing.
Mr. Chappell?
No.
Mr. Ogden?
No.
I, I do have a comment, and I, I really, and I want to address the city council with this, and I'm going to make it short and sweet. I have a big problem with some of our board members sitting on two boards, that we go through a process when they start here and they go to council, and it's a board of adjustments. I think that needs to be a totally different, different individuals that make other decisions.
I know, Mr. Chapel, you have resigned from the Board of Adjustments, Mr. Ogden, you sit on it, and I, I actually, and I sat on the Board of Adjustments for years before I sit here, and I have a big problem that we have the same people deciding what's happening through the process, and I don't know if there's anything in the, the City Ordinance that's saying.
No, I will, I will tell you that in, in several cities that I have talked to other planning commissioners, and I know we're not Oklahoma City, but I know Oklahoma City for sure requires a planning commissioner to be on the Board of Adjustment. And part of that reasoning is that when, that you have a voice from planning to explain why certain ordinances were, I certainly think that there was an issue with two of us, but I think, I think it's a good idea, and I know that a lot of cities do have, require.
But I think, Mr. Chapel, my problem is that we need an independent board to decide something that if we deny somebody or approve it, and it goes through council and they go to the Board of Adjustments, it needs to be an individual group that decides that, not one that's already voted no or yes on something, that's already sitting on that board, that may influence that other board. They would get a report from us, wouldn't they, Mr. Hanky, that we denied it or approved it, and the City Council did the same thing?
Yeah.
And their last alternative is the Board of Adjustments?
Right.
And, you know, Mr. Chapel, I kind of agree with you, you know, I sit on the historical preservation because I'm chairman of this board, and whoever's the next chairman sits on it too, but I, I'm not the chairman of the historical preservation, I'm just a board member there to tell them, you know, if we did something different that they were trying to approve in the City of Guthrie. But if we do a no vote here or a yes vote, then you're not going to change your mind on that board when you get there.
No, but there's four other people.
There's still four other people, Chairman.
Well, I know that, but there actually, two of y'all were sitting on that board at one time.
And that's why.
And I've discussed it with the mayor and all the City Council members, and the, the deal was, they could not change that, and it was never that a way before that, so why is it that a way now? It's my deal, I mean, there's only one person that can sit on two boards, and actually, it's myself right now with the historical preservation. I don't know how you all got on it, but I have a, I have a big conflict of interest, and I think the City of Guthrie would too, with the people in this public, about if, if two of you all were sitting on there and you did two no votes automatically and you influenced one other in the five board.
Well, I can't, and I, and I can tell you, at no time did we ever consider anything that was brought to the Planning Commission at the Board of Adjustment. Never voted on anything twice. And when this was brought to my attention and it was a concern, I resigned my position because.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chapel.
And the reason that I accepted the position was because I was asked to serve.
Correct.
And then when it was brought up to me, that that seemed like, you know, it might be a conflict of interest, then.
I still think it's a conflict of interest for one board member to be on that same board that's making the decision.
Can I say some?
I'll just tell you, there's several cities that require by law.
Well, we're Guthrie, Oklahoma, we're not Edmond, we're not Oklahoma City.
I've heard that before, but that also doesn't mean that it can't happen, Chairman Powell.
Yeah, Commissioners.
I understand that.
I think, I think at one point in time, I'm not sure as of late, but I know in years past, it was hard for the city to get people to volunteer for boards and commissions. So we had people that were interested in volunteering heartedly, and they did some double duty. Now, I don't know if that has changed lately or not, but I know in the past that, that was a circumstance that did happen.
I would, I would actually like to address the City Council and let the council decide, you know.
Certainly.
Where we need to go from this point, and I agree with you, Mr. Chapel, on, on some things, but, you know, I'm, I'm very proud of you for resigning, and I know maybe you thought it was a conflict of interest too.
Well, you know, perception is reality.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And we want to, we want to all see this town grow.
Yeah.
And I, we need to change a lot of ordinances in this town that were written years ago that, that don't have any effect anymore. We need to loosen it up and make this town grow a little bit, but still control it at the same time.
Yeah.
And that's why you're here, that's why Mr. Ogden's here, that's why Mr. French is here.
Well, we can carry this thing sometimes too far. There are those that think the conflict, the conflict of interest in having too many contractors on the Planning Commission, Chairman Powell, so that's something that we just need to weigh them.
Well.
Just a minute, let me finish, if I may.
Yes, sir.
We just need to weigh those things individually, I certainly respect your opinion. I think, I don't think there's any problem in bringing somebody on the Board of Adjustment, somebody from the Planning Commission who can bring some of the information, why planning has got, why the ordinances are such, and an explanation, because in many cases, I have seen where nobody on the Board of Adjustment actually knew too much about what the city was requiring, and I think Mr. Chapel and I were able to bring some information to that. We didn't have to adjust any, we didn't have to vote on any denials or anything. I think it's a good idea not to have more than one, however.
Well, what would be the problem, and this is when I was on the Planning Commission before, when something went to the Board of Adjustment, if there was a question, does somebody from the Planning Commission went as a witness, so to speak?
Absolutely.
And give a report?
On the mic.
Not vote, but they'd just come there and, and here's the reason we did this or that or the other.
And actually, on that same note, I had just, I just downloaded a book off oklahoma.gov.org, which is the Planning Commissioner's Handbook, and I'm working on getting all the Planning Commissioners a copy of that, because one of the things that I read is that, you know, that there always should be a Planning Commissioner at the City Council meeting. Just, I mean, not, not in a, just to maintain, and I don't have the, I don't have, I don't[1657.37]